I would like to call this special meeting to order at 4:34 on 9/11/18. Can I have a mo— I'd like to go into exec session at 4:35 to this executive session for CRS 24-6-42, parentheses, "for B, legal advice." Board to conference with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters. CRS 24-6-42, parentheses, "G," four, parentheses, "G," consideration of documents protected, legal grievance, legal for grievance. Level four, sorry. CRS 24-6-42, parentheses, "for," parentheses, "F," personnel, personnel action items. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to resolve ourselves into executive session pursuant to the statutory citations listed by the chair.
Any discussion?
Second.
Second, sorry, second. Any discussion? May I have roll call?
Dr. Hyde?
Absent.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Like to start the study session at, I think it's 5:49. Sorry for being late. Go ahead.
We're also joined tonight by three of our guests that I'm going to introduce later in our presentation. Tonight, we're going to provide information on our goals that are listed in your PowerPoints. I've provided those to you inside the pink folder so you can follow along and take notes as needed. Our first goal that we're going to cover tonight is reviewing our process and timeline for charter authorization, building background knowledge on charter schools, understanding the Adams 14 enrollment landscape, and understanding the role of the state authorizer in Colorado. These goals will be, were established based on the guidance you as the board provided us on the August 28th study session. Within our charter application review process, we must be in compliance with the state law, local policy, and our national best practice, and making sure that we're following all of those areas. Our charter application review process supports Goal One, which is reviewing our process and timeline for tonight's agenda. There are three informational sources you will receive to help with the decision you'll make as the board on November 13th. One is our community input, the second one is our DAC recommendation, and the third one is our superintendent recommendation. Under that same first goal, we are going to review our charter application review process. This is also posted online on our website, and I've sent out the link through Monika so that you can access it, as well as to our colleagues and staff here, and ask them to share it with our public, both internally and externally. We're under the green arrow that's highlighted above, so our board meeting and study session, and then we have some additional upcoming events. This will be part of our closing tonight, as we'll walk through what is, will be upcoming this week and through next week. Our application review process, the board has opportunities to engage in meaningful discussions during the charter application review process. Under this, this is opportunities that you have during public comments to engage with our community, as well as attending our DAC sessions, to hear our public comments there, and engaging in the process that they're following. The topics that we're going to discuss today are generated by our Board of Education from the guidance that we received from you on our August 28th board meeting. On November 13th, our study session has not been determined yet, so we have some ideas for you, but we would seek your guidance on what you would like to see filled with that study session, should you want any additional information on our charter school process. Some upcoming events would include our September 18th community meeting. September 26th, we're going to have a tour of KIP, and on October 11th, we'll have an additional community meeting. Both of our community meetings are scheduled for our Savior Lutheran Church. The district is hosting those, and they'll present a draft of the community feedback as a tool that will present to you on the, uh, tonight, on October 9th. Tonight, we'll have three guest speakers. The protocol that we would like to follow is that we're going to have each guest speaker present. We've provided you a tool to take notes, should you have questions, highlights that you want to point out, concerns that you have. We're going to ask that you hold your questions as a board until the end of the presentation to ensure that all of our guests are able to present their information, and then we'll allow for time at the end for you to ask those questions through our guests that we have tonight. Again, our topics were generated by the board at our October 28th study session. We heard that our board wanted to learn more about charter schools, the governings of the potential impact on charter schools on Adams 14 as a school district, and learn more about charter school authorizing. So our guests tonight will cover those. Tonight, we have our three guests here, Mr. Brandon Helwig and Dan Schaler from the Colorado League of Charter Schools, Mr. Brian Eschbacher from the Educational Consultants, and Dr. Terry Croy Lewis is an executive director from Charter School Institute, or what we know as CSI. First up, we'll have Dan present from the Colorado League of Charter Schools. Again, on the 28th board study session on August, we heard a desire from the board members to understand more about charter schools and charter governancing. The Colorado League of Charter Schools is an organization dedicated to supporting charter schools in the state. They provide a number of services designed to ensure that every charter school in the state is high-quality and serve all students well. Dan is the vice president of the state and local policy at the league, and will give an overview of what charter schools are and how they are governed.
Great, thank you. And my colleague Brandon was unable to join me this evening, but I'm happy to be here. Yes, and my name is Dan Challer. I'm with Colorado League of Charter Schools, and was asked to present a little bit tonight about some high-level information on charter schools, and then look forward to answering any questions you all might have. So first off, I wanted to say a little bit about who the Colorado League of Charter Schools is, because we get a lot of questions and some confusion about who we are relative to, for example, the Charter School Institute. So we were founded in 1994, one year after the passage of the State's Charter School Act. Colorado is the third state in the country to pass a charter schools act. We are a nonprofit membership organization dedicated to supporting what are now 255 charter schools across the state of Colorado. So the charter schools in the state voluntarily can choose to participate and pay dues to us to provide them certain services. Our services tend to break down across three general categories. Policy and advocacy, of which I am involved with, school services, so professional development opportunities, board trainings, those kinds of things, and then new school support. So as new schools try to come through the pipeline to get started, we have a team that provides them assistance. I wanted to highlight very quickly our vision here at the Colorado League of Charter Schools, which is that all Colorado students have access to high-quality publicly-funded school options. The reason I wanted to highlight that is because it doesn't contain the word charter school in it. Yes, we believe charter schools are a key part of trying to provide high-quality public school options, but we don't think it's necessarily the only way that high-quality public school options can be provided to our kids, but we are dedicated to making sure all kids in Colorado have access to those alternatives. Quickly, in terms of the breakdown between the league versus CSI, as I said, we are a support organization that members can voluntarily choose to participate in. We are open to all of the charter schools, serving over 120,000 kids now across the state. We have typically had about 90% historically of schools that do decide to participate with the league. As compared with CSI, who I know you will hear from a little bit later, they are our state's state-level authorizer. They currently oversee, I know it says 41 here, but 39 schools across the state that serve 17,000 students. As distinct from us, their primary function is as an authorizer, in which role they hold the contracts for the 39 schools that they authorize. So very quickly, I think you all have a good sense of this, but what are charter schools? The definition we often use is this one. So charter schools are public schools that are allowed the same, the flexibility to be more innovative, while at the same time being held accountable for advancing student achievement. So really, at the heart of the charter school concept is kind of that trade-off, that in exchange for increased flexibility, you will have rigorous accountability on the other side, and that's sort of the nature of the charter school contract that gets established when a charter school is started. But I did want to highlight, when we talk about charter schools being public, because we often get lots of questions about what exactly does that mean? Because it's not, it doesn't just mean that charter schools get public dollars. There are a number of criteria that come with that. For example, charter schools are subject to the same standards and assessments as all other public schools in the state. They are nonreligious, as are all other public schools in the state. They are open to all children, and cannot screen in terms of their enrollment practices, and they cannot charge tuition, just like all other public schools in the state. Currently, as I said, we have 255 charter schools in Colorado operating across approximately 50 school districts, serving more than 120,000 students, which represents approximately 14% of the state's K-12 public school enrollment. One of the things that we often get questions about is are charter schools serving a representative proportion of the state's population? And the answer is yes. In fact, charter schools on several key metrics are serving a population that in many respects is more diverse than non-charter public schools in the state. Specifically, charters currently are serving 51% students of color compared to 45% for non-charters across the state, 21% English language learners compared to 16% for non-charters. Did want to include a couple slides that just kind of highlight the most recent state testing information about charter schools and how they're performing, both in general and across some key, specific subgroups. So what this slide is just demonstrating is that on the most recent CMAS for English Language Arts mean-scale scores, charter schools are not only outperforming non-charters for all students, but also outperforming across free and reduced-price lunch-eligible students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. We see similar results on math, CMAS. And so in the final couple minutes of my presentation, I did just want to tick through some of the most common myths that we hear about charter schools, and what the facts here on the ground in Colorado are. So one, we get this all the time, some or all charter schools are private schools. No, there is no such thing as a private charter school. All Colorado charter schools, as I said before, are public, nonreligious, open to all, cannot charge tuition, and cannot screen students. Myth number two, charter public schools are privatizing and/or corporatizing public education in Colorado. In fact, under Colorado law, charter schools are prohibited from being organized as anything but nonprofits. Now charter schools, much like districts, can go into contractual arrangements with education service providers to provide services within their schools. Sometimes those ESPs are for profit. But unlike some states that have more prevalence of this, we have very little of that going on in Colorado. In fact, less than 3% of charter schools in Colorado have entered into that sort of an arrangement with an education service provider. Myth number three, charter schools are not accountable. As I said before, the facts on this are that charter schools are accountable to the same standards and assessments as all other public schools in the state. And in fact, because of that performance contract that I referred to before, which is supposed to stipulate the exact performance metrics that the authorizer wants to see the charter school obtain, in that respect, charter schools are in some ways more accountable than non-charter public schools. Myth number four, charter schools play by an entirely different set of rules because of all the waivers they have. In fact, the waivers that charter schools can obtain are very similar to the ones that are available to traditional public schools across the state. Charter schools, yes, have pursued them with more regularity over the years because that whole autonomy is at the heart of charter schools, but the actual list of things in statute that districts can also pursue is very, very similar to what charter schools can pursue. Myth number five, charter schools are not transparent with taxpayer dollars. So the facts here are that the same provisions around public school financial transparency that apply to school districts also apply to charter schools. So charter schools ought, just like school districts, have to regularly post financial information on their websites for free public access, check records, all of those things need to be published regularly. Number six, charter schools raise all sorts of private money in a way that traditional public schools can't. The reality is that charter schools and school districts alike can accept gifts, grants, and donations from outside benefactors. And through a lot of the foundations that districts have set up, we've actually see that districts are collecting about $44 million a year in that outside money compared to just 14 million for charter schools. And finally, charter schools are full of unqualified teachers, is another thing we get all the time. In fact, 75% of charter school teachers are licensed. Charter schools do have the flexibility to not have licensed teachers, but in those relatively limited cases where they do, it's because they found somebody who has qualifications in other ways, somebody who might be a second-career professional, a retired college professor, who just doesn't have that licensure, but that does not mean that they are not qualified. Very quickly, and I'll just skim through this because we have an authorizer here in the room who can speak to this more directly, but I did list off just of the, some of the standard roles and responsibilities that authorizers have, ranging from approval and renewal of charter school applications, negotiating the terms of those contracts. Under state statute, authorizers are supposed to review annually charter school performance and bring that to the charter school. No more than 5% of per pupil revenue can be withheld by the school district for central administrative overhead costs. The rest does go to the charter school. And I think if there's an overall principle that sort of guides this, I would say it's kind of focusing on the what instead of the how. So in many respects, the charter school does have flexibility over the how they accomplish the objectives, but the key rule that authorizers play is making sure that they're setting a high bar around the what they want that school to accomplish. And then lastly, special education is something we get lots of questions about. So in Colorado, charter schools, for purposes of special ed, are not their own local education agency, which does create some kind of interesting dynamics because the district is ultimately responsible for free and appropriate public education, or FAPE. That said, as I mentioned before, charter schools, their enrollment decisions have to be made in a nondiscriminatory manner, so they cannot screen students on the basis of academic ability before an enrollment determination is made. If after that enrollment decision is made, it is determined by the IEP team for that student that he/she has needs that a given school cannot meet, much like in a traditional public school, there may be a conversation at that point about whether an alternative placement would best suit that child's needs. But that same conversation happens in the traditional public school setting. So with that, I look forward to answering your questions here in a bit.
On August 28th, the board was interested in learning about the potential impacts of charter schools in Adams 14. We brought in an expert on school district planning, Brian Eschbacher, to discuss this complex topic. Brian is an education consultant, who was most recently the director of planning and analysis at Denver Public Schools. In this role, Brian and his team oversaw the annual strategic regional analysis, which provided detailed research into demographic and enrollment trends that helped the district and board make long-term planning decisions. Brian is going to give you an overview of the enrollment landscape in Adams 14, and afterwards, the Adams 14 Executive Director of Budget and Financing, Sean Milner, will provide some local context regarding the financial impact.
Thank you for a few minutes of your time this evening. As was mentioned, I was a district employee of Denver Public Schools for seven years. The last five years, I was the Executive Director of Planning and Enrollment Services, in charge with looking at the growth of the city and ensuring that we had the right set of schools to meet those needs. The team here had reached out and asked for some thoughts. This is a similar conversation that I had many times with 200 principals in Denver about what might happen if this happens, like what would happen to me? And so, so I just wanted to share a bit of what I looked at on slide 30. This is all 2017 October count, and the source for this is the CDE Pupil Membership Reports on the CDE website. And the reason I thought of this first is Colorado is a choice state, and I counted up, using the reports on CDE's website, about 90,000 students of about 900,000 students in the state. So about 10% attend a district other than the one that they live in. And that's the report that this zooms in on. And you can start to see the shifts that people have in terms of coming in and going out, and then, you know, the gaps with some of the peers. And so just to kind of walk through an example of this, so the top one is CSI. 1,197 students live within this geographic area and attend a CSI school. And as we heard, there's dozens of those, but, you know, Victory Prep is one, and CLA is another. No students live in a CSI area, which is why the second column then is zero. And so we have a gap in net enrollment of 1,197. Another example is 451 students live in Adams 14 but attend a Mapleton school, whereas only 33 students live in Mapleton and attend an Adams school. And then you can, you know, see the gap over and over again. This was something that was very familiar to me in Denver. Denver had something like 7,000 students live in the city limits and go to a neighboring district, and then 5,000 students lived in a neighboring district and came into the city. So really, really high levels of movement in between districts. And, you know, I showed the map here because I think we all know you could, you know, drive a quarter of a mile or half a mile, and you could hit another district. And so some families may live closer to a neighboring district than they do to their own. But I think the backdrop to this is Colorado is a choice state, and students are choicing already. And so in Denver, as new schools were opening or moving, it wasn't a zero-sum game, the way that I saw it. And we were very fortunate to have large amounts of data to work off of, that when things are happening, it's, sometimes you're recapturing students that were going to a neighboring district anyway. And in the time I was in Denver, we went from about 72,000 students to about 92,000 students. So high, high levels of growth. And I think one of the strategies that we had used was by moving schools around and introducing new schools that we found to be popular. And we were recapturing a lot of students who were leaving to go, particularly to the southern suburbs in Denver, like a Littleton, or a Cherry Creek, or Douglas County. And we started to see those shifts happening over time. I showed a few other examples at the bottom for Brighton Adams 12 and Mapleton in terms of their net movement as well, based on the 2017 data. So the other side, I just kind of called the considerations. You know, I touched on the first one, but, you know, about 86,000 families are attending a school outside of their district of residence. And, you know, I also, you know, touched on the second, the geographic components, that you may not live that far from another district for students that are going there. One of the challenges that I saw in Denver, it was around data visibility. And maybe Sean will touch on this as well, but if you live in this district and go to another district, it is highly unlikely that the district staff is able to know about it. There's not open data reporting of these students over the summer, for instance. So if a, you know, if a given child was, you know, slated to go here, and then switches to Mapleton, the principal may not know about it, the secretary may not know about it, and then come the first day of school, that seat is sitting empty. But as we know, the budget follows the student in Colorado, and so that funding would go to a neighboring district. The goal I had was to try to have as much visibility and advance notice as possible. And we became very strong in the time I was in Denver undoing long-term enrollment forecasts and one-year-out enrollment projections. So we went from 3% projection gaps down to a 10th of a percent. We were incredibly accurate by the end because we had really, really strong data visibility of where students were going within the city. So what's an example of that? If a child was, you know, thought to have gone to a neighborhood elementary school, and then instead they were going to enroll in a charter school, we knew about it because we had consolidated student information systems, and we had a single source of enrollment, meaning that one child could only have one seat at any one time. You know, so contrast that with potentially applying to college, where you could have applied to five colleges, you could have gotten into five colleges, you're sitting in May with five acceptances, but clearly, you're only going to show up at one college. Four of them don't know it yet, and so how are they supposed to plan accordingly? That was one of the goals that we had, and we had really strong movement during my time in Denver, where we were able to give principals really high certainty around their school-level projections, class sizes, which then led to their budgets being more accurate for staffing and scheduling. It's something we took a lot of pride in, helping giving them the information to plan. And I think one other idea is just opportunities, if you wanted to think about the impact of any school, but just the coordination that can happen. Right now, I left the district at the end of June. Right now, I'm helping some other cities work through their enrollment growth or declines in some other cities around the country. And I think the more that we're able to acknowledge the challenges that are happening with birth rates or housing, and thoughtfully plan for them, I think we're better off. And I think that's been something I've been excited to support some other cities with. But having data-sharing agreements of where students are attending for the upcoming year to improve those. So for instance, if a, if a child is sitting with two acceptances in May, can we share the data of where that student is potentially going to go for this fall? So that schools can thoughtfully plan for it. Because the swing of just 10 students could be a teacher, right? If you think about the funding from the state, a number as small as that can really have an impact on a school budget. So the more we can have with data-sharing agreements can be helpful. Coordinating recruiting plans to ensure accurate information, you know, in this era nationally of people sharing information that may not be favorable or true. I think this is something we took a lot of pride in, that we only talk up the good things about ourself. We don't say anything negative about another school, and really holding to those types of things. And then I think Dan touched on this a little bit with the special education, but equitably serving students with mild, moderate, and then even severe low incidence special needs to ensure that there is no perception that some school has advantages over another one. I think that was a conversation I had many, many times of a principal, whether it was a district or a charter principal, saying they have an unfair advantage over me, and my job was to help make sure that the rules were as fair as possible. So these were just a few considerations based on my time that I wanted to share. So thank you.
Next, Mr. Sean Milner is going to provide his expertise on financial impacts on Adams 14.
Good evening. The financial impacts equal about roughly $850,000 that the district would not receive per every 100 students that would leave the district. So kind of going down that list, looking just at VPA and CLA, which are currently two charter schools that are in our district, but we're not the authorizer of. We have roughly 908 students that attend there from our district, equalling about $7.7 billion. You know, going down the list, looking at the 3,155 students that opt out of Adams 14 to go to another school district, whether it be another public school or charter school, is roughly over $26 million. You know, seeing those two numbers, that, that's just the state money that would be coming in. There are also grant money, federal title money that comes in that we would not receive due to that as well. Don't have an exact number on that because the title money fluctuates each year. It depends on, you know, our enrollment and a lot of other factors. So that $26 million could be increased depending on federal grant dollars as well. But looking at that, at the same time, 3,000 students and $26 million, we could not afford to build a high school or another building for $26 million and take on 3,000 students at the same time. So there's a lot of money there. Another thing to take into consideration is that all of the schools, meeting with the other districts, are seeing somewhat of a decline in enrollment currently right now. And as we see a decline in enrollment, whether they're going to different public or charter schools, we need to keep an eye on how, what is in the enrollment in all of our schools? Are they currently enrolled to the, you know, capacity? And looking to see if we need to consolidate schools or move forward that way. And looking to see if we need to consolidate schools or, or move forward that way.
Our final presenter of the evening is Dr. Teri Croy Lewis, the Executive Director of the Charter School Institute, or what we know CSI, Colorado's Model Charter Authorizer. Dr. Lewis has been a school leader, school founder, charter board member, and an education consultant. The Charter School Institute authorizes 41 schools statewide, serving over 17,500 students. As a charter authorizer, CSI provides school autonomy and decision-making while using a transparent set of academic, financial, and organizational performance standards to hold them accountable.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. I have some other information and some packets if you'd like more information, but I don't want to overwhelm you with paperwork. You probably have enough of that. So, thanks for being here, and thanks for the introduction, or thanks for inviting me. I'm going to talk a little bit about charter schools and about CSI, but I'll try not to be repetitive from what Dan said, and so I may go through some slides pretty quickly, because he covered some things. As he mentioned, charter stu-, charter schools started in 1993. CSI was enacted by the state legislature in 2004, and opened its first two charter schools in 2005. And that's Ross Montessori up in Carbondale, and then the other schools, Colorado Springs Charter Academy down in Colorado Springs. Those were the first two charter schools authorized by CSI. The reason for that is state legislators saw that there were needs for high-quality public state agency to authorize charter schools, and wanted to have options for at-risk kids, because our, part of our mission by statute is to serve an at-risk population. And we'll talk about that as how our student, how our schools are doing that. We also have our own board, and sometimes I get confused with the state board. We actually have our own board. It's a nine-member-appointed board, seven appointed by the governor, and two by the commissioner. There also is, there are some regulations by statute that we must follow about board composition. One being that there needs to be a political balance on the board, so we can't have more Democrats than more Republicans. That has to be balanced, and that's very important. That's in statute, and it's something that we adhere to. We also look for geographic diversity. We also are required to have one person on the board who was a parent of a CSI student, either current or past parent. And then, there are other qualifications that the board in total needs to have, and you can see some of them here, that they've had charter school development experience, financial management, charter school law, special education curriculum. So, not every board member needs to have all of that, but in total, they need to meet all those qualifications. So, the mission, CSI's mission is to serve an, an at-risk population, as we, I said earlier, and have high-quality public school choices. Our schools are across the state, as we talk about. This is state agency, so it feels a little different from Durango to Salida to Colorado Springs to Fort Collins to Steamboat to Grand Junction. So, our schools truly are all over the state, and so we have rural, urban, and suburban schools. Our students, if you look at some of, look at our, our data, our demographics, we have a higher population, if you're looking, again, on state averages, of more ELL students, a higher minority population. We are about on par with the state average for FRL, free and reduced lunch. And our, so you see that when you look at state averages, our schools in total are usually higher than in, in all those demographics. In terms of our performance outcomes, all our schools are related to either improvement or performance. So, all our schools have met that. There we go. We got it. More about our vision. Not only are we required by statute to be a high, a high-quality model authorizer, but we also partner with districts. And you may know that we do have a partnership agreement with Adams 14 that was signed years ago before I came on board. So, what does a partnership look like? Well, we provide resources and materials for districts. Sometimes they ask us if they, we could, they could use our resources for the new school application process, for a transfer application process, for an expansion process. And so, we do provide training and resources in that way. We also help with the renewal process, working with the district right now around some renewal issues that they're having, and we'll provide resources for them as well. Last year, we worked with the district down south on how to go through their expansion process. Sometimes we handle the process from beginning to end, and sometimes we just provide those resources, or we serve as an external reviewer. And sometimes, we are the authorizer. And you find that there are districts that sometimes say, "We'd rather not be in the authorizing business. We just don't have the capacity to do it." We also work with CACSA, which is the Colorado Association for Charter School Authorizers, and that's where we bring authorizers together, at least quarterly, to talk about how do we share best practices and resources? And we really encourage all authorizers to participate in that, and we are just one of many that do. So, what does authorizing look like in Colorado? Well, out of 178 school districts, most of them have something called exclusive chartering authority, which you might have heard of. Most districts have that, which means you have first right of refusal. That means you have the opportunity to authorize a charter school, or you may release that charter to CSI. There are only eight districts that don't have it, and actually, four of them are very small, so they essentially do have it, they just haven't applied for it. So, there are four districts that don't have it and haven't sought to have it back, but they could, they could apply for that. That's not something that you lose forever, is something that you can ask to have back, and you can apply to CDE to, to gain ECA. Most of our schools these days are coming to us through not a district that does not have ECA, but a transfer. So, you see where a district has, has its charter, and they've decided to work with CSI and the school to say, "Maybe you should apply to CSI as a transfer school." And so, it's a school that's already up and going, much like, in your case, CLA-VPA was a school that was authorized by Adams 14, and then was transferred to CSI. There is an application process, that doesn't mean that is an automatic, but districts are doing that more and more. We actually had a school start with us this year that's a transfer school from Jeffco. Try to get, I don't want to take up too much time. Oh, we got flies. It's September. Finding the best fit, so schools often will say to us, "If we're in a district, or we're a district that either doesn't have ECA, or has said, 'We're going to leave that up to you, school,' why would you choose, how would you choose between a district authorizer and a CSI?" These are the things we tell them to look at. What are the financial benefits for the district? What's, what are the financial benefits for the school? First, look at the financial analysis. Then, you're going to look at what kind of PD and service offerings and support that you're going to get in either one. And again, that's part of the decision model. And then, looking at staffing, we have about 21 full-time staff that work at CSI, that are there to support just charters, that's all we do. And so, is that something that is going to be helpful, or does the district staff provide the support you need? And then, how much autonomy could you receive? And again, it is part of statute that we provide as much autonomy to our schools as possible. Why authorize a school? What are, what are you looking for as a district, and what are we looking for as an authorizer? Well, we want to have, our schools have the most autonomy, and we want the highest accountability. That's the bargain. The more autonomy you have, the more accountability you have. And then, the goal is for the highest-quality schools. So, that's why our schools go through a rigorous review process during the renewal time, and an annual review. And I have examples of that, of our schools, how we review them each year, what that annual review looks like, and we review academics, we review finances, and operations. And so, be happy to share that with you as well. Our renewal, if a school goes through renewal, we have eight schools going through renewal now. That process is rigorous, it starts a year before the renewal, and then we ask them to, then we, our board will make a decision, what kind of contract they may receive. It may be a performance contract of two years, plus an automatic two, it could be a five-year contract, and it could be any other thing in between. We have schools on all different contracts. Core authorizing principles, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. I think we've kind of talked about it throughout the conversation, and we will provide more resources if you'd like, but obviously, maintain high standards, safeguard school autonomy, and protect student public interests. And we do that in all different ways, but I know you've had a long evening already, and you have a lot in front of you, so I won't go through it in detail. And then, the questions, you've just had a lot of people talk to you, three people with lots to say about charters, and so, I'm sure you have some questions, so I'm just going to stop there. Thank you very much for your time.
So, I know we're coming up to 6:30, which is usually the start of our Board of Education meeting. We want to be able to offer, for our guests to answer any questions that you have, so if you want to list them out, or you can tell us if you want us to provide those responses in writing, but we'll seek guidance from you of how you want to proceed.
Is there any? Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions. For example, if a charter school is authorized by a district and is not renewed, what processes followed? What happens then?
If a charter is authorized by a district, and they choose not to renew it, they can appeal that decision, but they could also start closing procedures.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I was just curious, in, in your line of work with charter schools, do you see any correlation between funding and performance? Do well-resourced charter schools do better than those that don't have as many resources?
That's a great question, and no, that's not, we do not see a direct correlation. Well, does it make a difference? Yes, obviously. Our schools were able to receive additional mill levy money this year, that has made a significant difference around staffing and transportation, and when I talk to our schools. But the performance is not about the money, it's, and it never has been.
My question is, how do you cap your schools? In other words, enrollment? Do you make a decision on how many students you're going to take in before you make the charter school, or said? So, where do you cap at?
I'll say how we do it. So, when we have a contract with a school, it's very clear on what their enrollment projections are. And if they want to exceed that enrollment projections, that would be a conversation that we would have with the school, and that has happened with some of our schools. So, when they submit an application, or in the contract, they'll say, "We'd like to serve K6 students, and we'd like to serve, you know, 300 students in the first year." And that is part of their application, and we'll talk about that, and that becomes part in their contract. However, they do have the ability to negotiate that with us.
A little further, though, so how many, let's say you're going K through six. So, how many first graders do you decide, how many second graders, third graders, or so? You said 300, but that doesn't tell me how many first grade-
That needs to be spelled out in the whole, that's a plan. What's, how many students are you going to serve in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth? And that's all included.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, part of, as part of that authorization process with the district, can the district set out a cap on how many students a charter school serves?
We do not cap enrollment, but we do talk to our schools about making sure we're coming to an agreement. And we had a school ask, for, for instance, we had a school that opened a year ago that wanted a very high enrollment, and that was a negotiation, and we came to something that was much more agreeable for both the authorizer and the school.
How about the facility that you will use in the district? How do you come upon the facility that you will run your charter school?
Yes, thank you. We see any number of situations where charter schools are trying to find various facilities in which to open. Sometimes that does happen in dialogue with the district. If the district has some perhaps vacant or underutilized space, that they'd be open to sharing with their charter school. But other times, it involves the charter school having to go on the private market and find a place where they can get started. It was mentioned that 170 out of 178 school districts in Colorado retain exclusive chartering authority? Has exclusive chartering authority ever been taken away from a district?
Yes, in the early days, like exclusive chartering authority was something that many districts would lose, but they could regain it. And then, there were changes made years later, was it 2009, I think, where ECA, there were changes. Now, it's not something you have to apply for every year, but we did have a school that came to us several years ago from Westminster, and they did lose ECA, and then gained ECA back pretty quickly. So, it was, most, again, most of our schools are in districts that have ECA.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would just quickly add to that, that I believe the incident that Teri referred to is one of the only incidents over the last decade where a district has lost their exclusive chartering authority.
If, sir, if you put your charter school in the south section of our school district, and we have kids in the north part of the district, how would they get transportation to your school? Is that up to the district to get it, or is that up to the parents, or are you going to furnish buses for them?
Good question. So, transportation typically falls to the school itself to try to provide, which because of the, the budget constraints a lot of charter schools are dealing with, that does often fall to the families. There are some districts that have, because they think of the charter school students as part of the district, they have set up transportation options that include the charter schools. But generally speaking, it is, it does fall to the families.
Anything else? Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just a minor technical question, but the information that Mr. Eschbacher? Eschbacher? Eschbacher presented showed that there were 1,197 pupils at VPA and CLA, but Mr. Milner had 908. Do we know what that discrepancy is?
Sure. The larger number is going to any CSI school, not just those two. I think Mr. Milner zoomed in on just the two, so that gap is all other schools.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, I checked today, so we have access, obviously, to all student information systems that our schools use, and CLA-VPA is sitting at 847 students. Thank you for your presentation.
So, with the questions, if you have any additional ones that come up, please make sure you forward them to Mrs. Avina, and then we'll be able to provide those to our experts. Please remember that our experts tonight are not here representing KIPP Colorado, they're here representing their experts in their areas around charter authorizing with them. So, we'll be able to give you more specific answers when KIPP presents. So, some next steps that we have, on September 18th, we'll have our community meeting. We have a morning session and an afternoon, or an evening session, and those should have been forwarded to you on your calendar. We have our board study session on September 25th, where KIPP Colorado will come in and present. And then, at that time, you'll be able to ask them specific questions on their programming and on their application. And then, on 9/26, we have our KIPP school tours that we've already arranged, and we'll be giving you more information as those dates come, but Mrs. Avina should have forwarded those to you to place a hold on your calendars for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Burke, I just had a quick question about that. The school tours, I imagine that's because those are the closest to our community. I was just curious, though, KIPP is doing a, a bilinguacy program at one of their schools in southwest Denver, I think, and that's a key component of their application. Was there a reason why we didn't decide to tour that school?
I'd hate to put KIPP Colorado on the spot, even though I know they're here tonight, but part of the negotiation that we had gone back and forth, these were some of the schools that they provided to us. So, I don't want to speak on their behalf about why these schools were selected, so I'm not sure, Senator Moreno, that I'm able to answer your question. But I can provide that to you in a written response, so that I don't put this, the KIPP Colorado on the spot tonight. But I can provide that to you in a written response, so that I don't put the KIP Colorado on the spot tonight.
Thanks.
The last part that I'll need guidance from you on as a board is on our Board of Ed study session, which is number seven, on November thirteenth, which is also the same day that our board will take an action on this item. We would like to know if there's topics that you would want us to bring back to you for that study session before the vote, or if you feel like you've received all the information that you want with the upcoming study sessions that we have, or if there's additional topics you would like us to bring forward for you.
You good? Looks like everybody's okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And that will-
That's it, we didn't have another presentation, but we moved it for next week, next board meeting.
So that'll end our study session, and any, do you need a break, anybody? Okay, and then we will start with our board meeting.
We have the students that are gonna be here too, and from the high school, so I'm gonna tell them to come in.
Thank you.
You better not, you gotta keep it general.
Board meeting to order. Oh, okay. Wow, that's a lot. According to fire code, everybody needs to be seated somewhere. We have some up here. Like to call the meeting to order now. And we'll have the pledge of allegiance, please stand, and a moment of silence. And in that, I'd like to have, in the moment of silence, remember nine eleven, the families that are still grieving through the loss.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Monica, can I have roll call?
Dr. Hyde?
Absent.
Mr. Moreno?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the meeting minutes of August twenty-eighth.
Can I have a second?
So move, Madam Chair.
Monica, roll call.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I'd like to have approval to approve, a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
We have recognitions and celebrations.
Yes, we do. We're gonna be recognizing our student workers from the summer, as well as our supervisors. So I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Sean Milner, our Executive Director of Finance.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Abrego. Tonight, we would like to give recognition to our student workers in the areas of information technology, custodial, and ground services. Over the past three years, we have had forty-five student workers throughout the three different areas and have spent nine one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars for their services. These student workers have been instrumental in the planning and execution of many of our successful summer programs. Their dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence has significantly enhanced the overall performance of Adams fourteen. We have some of the supervisors and managers here. They'd like to say a few words about some of their student workers.
That'd be great.
Starting with Ms. Sheila Burke from Federal Programs.
Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Abrego. Tonight, I'm here to recognize two of our student workers that were instructional paras with us at Central Elementary and at Kemp Elementary School. During their time during our summer program, they served as instructional paras and office support staff. They helped to greet our visitors, they helped in the reception about answering phones, provided customer service, directing parents as needed, and then also provided literacy and math support to our students in the classroom during one-on-one sessions or in small groups. After their session during our instructional programs, our two student workers also came in and supported us in technology, that I'm sure Mr. Milner will have Mr. Brandon Steely come up and talk about in a few minutes. So I'd like to recognize Ms. Myra and Ms. Rebecca from Adam City High School.
With that, we'd like to call Mr. Brandon Steely up next for Information Technologies as well.
President Quintana, members of the board, Dr. Abrego. My name is Brandon Steely, I'm the manager of Technology Services. In the summer, we had the honor of working with two fantastic Adam City High School students, Becky and Myra. Working under the guidance of various Technology Services staff, because I could not handle both of them by myself, these amazing ladies accomplished, and this is among other things. They unpacked and recycled the packaging for twelve hundred Chromebooks, inventoried, registered, and labeled these Chromebooks, then assisted in their deployment to the schools, including wiring carts, unpacked, labeled, registered, and cased a hundred and twenty Apple iPads, which is about the most painful process we have, imaged over two hundred laptops to get them ready for deployment to incoming and returning staff, then helped deploy those laptops to incoming staff, helped with the recycling of hundreds of pounds of old equipment, assisted with office moves in the SS building, reimagined the DuPont Media Center lab and inventoried all the desktops at ALSUP, reimagined and replaced old desktops at Kemp. Charles Linder, who's also in the back, is our lead tech, and he made the following statement. "Without the help of these two young ladies, we would not have been able to meet our goal of deploying twelve hundred Chromebooks by the end of summer, which beat our original timeline of December twenty eighteen. With their help, we were able to accomplish more than we normally would have been during the summer break. Also, these ladies showed great initiative and endurance by not only volunteering for work with the Technology Services team, but also to work as pairs during summer school and maintain their practice schedule with cheerleading. We, as a group, were fortunate to have them this summer. We hope to see more students like this in the future programs." So on behalf of Technology Services, I'd like to say thank you to the board for continuing this program. We would like to wish Myra well on her journey to college next summer, and we hope to see Becky back next summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milner, can we have the two girls come up if they say something?
Sure.
Something, you know. And the reason I ask, because I did that one year. That's a tough job.
Well, good evening, board members and everybody who decided to attend. My name is Myra, and-
I'm Becky.
Well, we just want to talk about, I'm gonna cry. So, I don't even- Okay, I'll go first. So this was, this was actually my first job, and honestly, like, thank you to Brandon and Sheila. They really helped me, like, get the, what being, being in a job is like, and the idea of it. And we just had so much fun in that tech shop, and we both got to work with very young kids and liked, I don't know, it just was, it lit, lit me up when I helped a third grader understand a multiplication chart, you know? And that was just, it was just something that was really cool, and I loved spending my summer here, and I would like to come back next year.
Thank you.
We would like to thank the Board of Education for providing this opportunity for us, because without it, well, she would have never had her first job, and I would have never found that I really do want to work with kids, whether it be through para or whether it be through my first choice, which is to be a doctor. And, well, we hope you guys provide, continue and provide this opportunity and inspire other students to, like, follow their dreams, even if it starts with a little job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This past summer, we also had five grounds workers, that Mr. Castillo was gonna say some words.
Good evening, President Quintana, members of the board, and Dr. Abrego. This was first, my first year having student workers for me, so I had the pleasure of having five young men work for me in the district this year. For four of the young men, it was our second summer of performing work in the grounds area. Some people see that it might not be as glamorous, but these young, young men took it upon themselves to make these grounds appear great, the playgrounds to be safe for the young, young students in our district. They recall the times that they went to these elementary schools and middle schools, and sometimes the facilities weren't up to par. So they took their extra time and that heat, dealing with the weather elements, and made sure that stuff that got done. So with that, you know, all the students were prompt, dependable in the job they did, and they maintained the appearance of our playgrounds and our grounds at all the schools in the district. Jose, Andy, Edgar, in particular, come from a long line of family members that work and take pride in the district. They come from a family that has a full-time employee that is in the grounds, a building engineer at Central, another one that's a building engineer at Lester Ronald, and another one that's a building engineer at Kearney, along with three family members that have graduated our schools, came back, and have become teachers in the district. So this family is very dedicated to the facilities, the children, and the community of this district. So I like to take pride in making sure I recognize them. Them three individuals couldn't be here tonight, because they also play on the varsity boys soccer team at the high school. And along with that, Jose is actually the field goal kicker for the boys' football team as well. So they carry a full load, and I look forward to having them, young men, in the future. With Emmanuel and Juan, these kids were unbelievable. They came in prompt and courteous, respectful every day. They made sure they greeted everybody with not only eye contact, shaking hands, making sure they went into school and make sure everything was taken care of that we needed. They would make contact with secretaries to ensure that everything, from tree trimming trash to cutting the grass, and making sure everything was taken care of. And I'd just like to thank the Board of Education for allowing these students the opportunity to serve in the community and to affect the younger, the children, and carry this legacy on. Thank you.
Are the boys out here?
Emmanuel's here. Three of the others are at the soccer games.
Hi, Emmanuel.
Oh, it's Juan.
Oh, sorry, I thought you-
How's it going, guys?
How did you, what did you do on the grounds?
Well, I just did irrigation, and we mainly learned how to work as a team, you know, because it's a team effort, and we learned how to, I don't, I don't really know how to, what to say, you know, but-
Did you enjoy it?
Yeah, it was a really eye-opening experience.
You think it'd be a good experience to bring it back?
Yeah, I'm trying to come back next year.
Okay. Well, we look forward to that.
All right. President, we, we are trying to reach out to, to carry these students on through the school year. If their schedules allow, we would like to have them come in afterwards, because some of them being upperclassmen, they do not have such a full load. And I think that would be beneficial not only to them, but to the district, because this, this young man here, like you said, irrigation, he learned the complexity of the irrigation system, from control systems to mass piping and everything that controls the whole dynamics of maintaining irrigation on our fields to make sure that we are on the proper watering cycle. But I think it's beneficial not only to them, but to us, to continue the program throughout the year, if possible, because that, that ties in and has that community pride.
And, Ms. Castillo, I think we discussed that when we brought it on, was it, as long, keeping going through the school year, as long as it doesn't hinder their grades, we, we didn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and I, and I like to look at it as like an extracurricular activity, just as, as it is what we do with our athletics, to make sure we give them the proper support in the classroom, to make sure that they're not lagging behind and allowing them the time for their studies and their academics as well.
And that was part of our goal when we brought it in, was to make sure they had a, the avenue and the resources, as long as their school academics were maintained, so-
And that'd be a good trait for him to follow in the future, if he, if he takes and really enjoys it, that's something for him to follow.
I have one question. Just one. When you got your first check, was you proud? Was you happy? Did your parents say-
Oh, yeah, I was pretty happy.
It's good for you, thank you.
It goes fast, huh?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't last.
Thank you.
Our biggest area support with the student workers during the summer was actually the building engineers. Mr. Michael Palmer was gonna speak to that.
Madam Quintana, President, distinguished board members, and Dr. Abrego. First and foremost, I would like to identify and give a lot of credit to all the kids that were here on the building engineer side, so I'm gonna acknowledge them right now. If I chop up some of their names, I apologize, but I'm gonna do the best I can on reading these names out. Cassandra Perez, Leila Diana Archuleta, Cristo Duran Ruiz- Uh, Cassandra Perez, Leila Diana Archuleta, Cristo Duran Ruiz, Mariana Guadalupe Flores Ramirez, Yalmet Del Calma Hernandez Alvira, Rebecca Jimenez, Karina Lonzo Reyna, Andrew Macho, Alyssa Ann Morales, Trinity Diane Ornalis, and Desiree Ann Wood. Just want to say that the, the students were great when they came in. They had such a strong, positive attitude every day. They were able to complete, complete all their work very efficiently on a consistent basis. Year-long staff loved working with them. They were able to identify um, all their strengths and they supported making those strengths, making them stronger. You know, some of the things that they did is uh, like at DuPont Elementary, we had to move a whole media center without them being there because how short-staffed we were throughout the maintenance, we would have never got that media center put into DuPont and they were a big part of that. And I really appreciated that. They helped on a lot of other projects at the high school. They were essential in making sure that the schools are ready for uh, the beginning of the year. Um, when we did the walks, um, the buildings were clean, they were immaculate, uh, they were working hard. I had nothing but good things to say about them and I'm really gratitude to the Board members for letting these kids work here to maintain some kind of work ethic and to be proud of the schools that they walk in. And uh, they should be very proud because I got a lot of compliments on the way the schools looked at the beginning of the school year. And I think it would be essential for them to continue this program because the kids here can be proud of the schools that they walk in, that the schools that they clean, and the schools that they keep maintaining. So, thank you, guys.
Are they here?
Could you guys please uh, come forward? There, there was eleven of them. I don't know if they're all here, but please, please stand up.
Does any, any, you don't have to, but if you want to say something, I, I would like it.
Thank you for having us this evening. Um, we, I really did appreciate the job that you let us have. It did let us, it did let us see everything that we are capable of doing over the summer and it really kind of took away, it, it really like gave us some strengths that we didn't know we had until now. Like I didn't know I could move a whole library with a group team, but it was really amazing to do it with a group and having a really fun time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Don't, everybody don't leave because we want to get some pictures uh, with each group, okay? You know, I do want to say that since I live around and I, you live by Rose Hill, I live by Monaco and DuPont. As I drove around this, the area, I could see them out there on the grass or the lawns, the buildings, working really hard and just taking pride in what they did. So it is noticed. Thank you.
Just like to say now that you're back in school and you see your peers throwing paper on the hallways, what do you tell them? Pick it up, huh?
Thank you.
Also, through the SWAT program, we had Ms. Crawford to say a few words.
Okay.
Hi, how is everybody? Um, I'm the Special Ed Coordinator for adults in the dis- in the district with disabilities. I work with students age fifteen all the way to twenty-four. This is Cassandra Perez. Cassie's a graduate from Adams fourteen High School, class of two thousand and fifteen, including a graduate from our Transition Program housed here. Cassandra is currently enrolled in our Adams fourteen Transitional Hope Center under a program called the School to Work Alliance Program funded in partnership with the Division of Voke Rehab. The Transition Hope Center is a place where Adams fourteen students, age fifteen to twenty-four with special needs, come learn how to secure post-secondary education opportunities or competitive wage employment. They also come and learn daily life skills. With the partnership, we were able with Adams fourteen to pay Cassandra for a hundred and eighty-hour internship here as a building, building engineer in our building. After her internship at the S S comes to close, we're hopeful that Cass- Cassie can secure full-time employment with Adams fourteen as a building engineer.
Thank you, Kathy.
So that includes all of our summer workers. Uh, we do have certifications or certificates for everybody, so I don't know, would the Board like to have everybody come up and take a picture with all the students that came tonight? If we could have all the student workers come to the front.
We'll have to stand here and then they'll...
Come here, good job.
Good job, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Plan to continue it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Well, we need all the students to come up. And their, uh, the ones they were, the sponsors. Where were the other ones too? Was there more than this?
No, that was it.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Burke?
Are your parents here? No? Okay. I would just say they could, they could come up. Are your parent, are the parents here? You could come up. Do we have any more parents?
Yeah, any parents or family members that would like to join the picture, that's fine and we'll be able to share the picture with you as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job, Mario.
Don't leave because I got some stuff for you guys.